I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for October 14th, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to the website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at HTTPS, www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the live, then on the 2025.10.14 City Council Meeting, and this meeting is being recorded. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Oleskiewicz?
Here.
Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson is absent. Sapienza?
Here.
We have seven present.
Seven present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, we do not have minutes tonight. Moving on, hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Please raise your hand, and you'll be called to the mic. Mr. Real, would you please step up to the mic?
Thank you, I want to-
Name an address for the record.
Oh, Virginia Real. 36 Holden Street.
Thank you.
I certainly want to reaffirm my support for the Affordable Housing Trust, which I know the council has supported, and I anticipate will be truly finalized tonight, so, thank you. And then, I really just have some questions about the ordinance that is coming up. It's not any opposition to that ordinance, just trying to understand it better. So, I really am interested in how much money is actually involved in this fund, likely to be involved downstream, how much are we sending to the state, and how much will we be able to recover? I know some of it has to do with the sale of the houses on Church Street, but other, there's other items that are included there, so, just a better understanding of that. And then, I have an idea, but I don't know how much money is there. So depending on that, this may or may not be a reasonable proposal, is this a possible opportunity to seed some money into the Affordable Housing Trust? If it's not a good opportunity, let's keep looking for those opportunities as we discuss revenue sources that might be a good stream into the trust. And this one may take too long, I mean, it's 26 months before this gets, any money gets realized, so, you know, that doesn't mean we shouldn't look to it in the future, but, you know, trying to seed some money in early on, so that the trust has a good launching pad. That's my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearing of visitors? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Council Paper Number 12,480, a communication from Counselor Fitch requesting time to discuss water safety and quality in the city of North Adams, postponed from the meeting of August 26, 2025. Counselor Fitch, do you have an update for us?
Yeah, certainly. Unfortunately, this has been postponed a couple of times, and has to be postponed again. Mayor Maxi called me earlier today, and thank you so much for that, Mayor Maxi, but delivered the unfortunate news that the presenter of this, Timothy LaScarbo, is too ill to make it here today. And so, whereas, that's a big bummer, I think I'd love to get this out there, we do have to postpone it again, I'm so sorry to say. So I will move to postpone this presentation to the second meeting of October, which is October 28th, and we'll hope for the best.
Second? There we have motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,481, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, creating a new Affordable Housing Trust under Chapter 2, Article 37, passed to a second reading at the meeting of September 23rd, 2025, and published as required by law in the Berkshire Eagle on October 3rd, 2025.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Counselor Shade.
We've had a lot of discussion around creating this, and I do believe that the compromise that we made to start this in January will work. There's a lot of opportunity that the Affordable Housing Trust is going to give us to find new money to help with housing. So, for those who see the crisis and see what's going on with the housing markets, this isn't going to be a full solution, but it's going to be something new that we're going to be able to try, and hopefully find new ways to help people. So for that, and because of that, I am 100% in favor of this, and I think you will.
Thank you. Counsel Blackmer?
I'm getting messages that we're not live, that they're showing the video of the, on the television.
Okay.
On CTC.
All right, I'm going to call a brief recess to get that corrected, if we can correct that.
Not, it's not the, it's not that, it's NBCT.
It's the cable?
They're-
Okay, I now resume this meeting of the city council. Please bear with us, we had a technical difficulty with Northern Berkshire Community Television, we have that fixed. If you're just tuning in at home, we are on Council Paper Number 12,481. This is the ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, creating a new Affordable Housing Trust. And we had a motion from Counselor Blackmer, with seconded by Counselor Shade, and we were in discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,519, in order to accept mass general law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, which governs the disposition of unclaimed property by a city or town, establishing an alternative procedure for disposing of abandoned funds held in custody of the city, postponing from the meeting of September 23rd, 2025. Do we have an update from Counselor Bona on the General Government Committee?
Yes, General Government met this evening, and pretty straightforward. We did hear some questions in hearing of visitors that, I don't know if the mayor through the chair wishes to entertain any clarification, but there was no opposition, it was just some questions and clarity, and specifically, if there's already funds that the city holds, or that maybe the state's holding that would have gone into this. And I think we heard one question, like, could these funds be used for such, like the Housing Trust, or can, or do they go into the general budget after they've sat there for a year? I think also Counselor Shade, and again, she wants to talk further on this, but was just saying that there's additional processes and formalities that come with this, just making sure that, you know, the city is aware of that, and that we follow through to make sure when it comes to legal notices and postings. But that's sort of out of our hands, and that's more for the administration to have to do, but again, it does add probably some work to City Hall. But again, that's, and then we voted to recommend to pass it, so, that's it. But again, if the mayor wants to help with some of that?
Go ahead, Mayor Maxi.
Sure. The first part, I believe, was the question of, was there anything in the account right now?
I think not, it doesn't exist.
Correct, it doesn't, it doesn't exist. So our first entry into the account will be the net proceeds from the sale of the Church Street property and High Street. Some of those, we have to pay ourselves first, we have to pay off our tax possession accounts or our tax liens, and then if there is any excess, will go into there. So we're still, and legal, we have to deal with the legal, so we're still settling that. Where it will help on the treasury side is with an topic called tailings, and those are our checks, at least I heard you laugh about that, giggle over there. Those are checks that we have issued that people haven't cashed, and we hold them for so many days. I will say that our Assistant Treasurer does an excellent job in contacting people or contacting vendors who haven't cleared that, so to predict what the balance would be at this point, I'm not quite sure, but that would be another thing that would feed into there, any tailings, which would be checks that are issued by the city of North Adams that aren't cashed. So more to follow on that. What will happen when this, for example, with the sale of the property, once the time passes, we would take that money and put it into the sale of city-owned land, because that's what it was, it was city that, it was money that, this property that the city owned and sold, so proceeds from the sale. But that doesn't mean at a later date that we couldn't take money out of our reserve to fund the trust, to kickstart the trust, which we are exploring different options to see how we could kickstart the trust. So we're very committed to that, Virginia. I hope that answered all your questions. Counselor, did I answer all your questions?
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe one additional question was, so, you know, when the House goes to Land Court, and the Land Court says the city now has it, and we can sell it or auction it, that then we have to put it into this account for a year. Now, does that mean the mayor can still come back?
Correct.
And after a year, they can't, like, they got one last year?
Correct.
So that is sort of part of the legal process?
Yes.
Yep.
Because now it's, it's more than just the transaction, it's actually cash.
Yep. And I think the question was that Land Court isn't the final yes or no.
Well, it is in the sense that they wouldn't issue the decree to us for the tax possession until they've exercised all of their means, and that was specifically around the Church Street property. Out of the, at the 11th hour, a nephew, twice removed, came out of the woodwork, and that slowed us down, and he didn't have the ability to pay us. So it is very possible that he or she could come out of the woodwork again, because it's access of the sale. But there's not going to be a, I mean, taxes were really past due, I don't remember the amount off the top of my head, but there's not going to be a lot in there.
Counsel Blackmer?
So, I just have a question. So you were talking about the tailings, are you talking about the tailings in, because to me, we're talking now about two different papers, actually. The tailings belong to Council Paper 12,519, and have nothing to do with 12,481, correct?
I just combined everything, Counselor. So the tailings would be the unclaimed checks.
And that would go, that's not necessarily going to the Housing Trust, or?
No, correct. We're not saying that any of this is going to the Housing Trust.
Okay, because that's when you started answering questions.
No, 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 I think Ms. Real asked a question about if it was possible, if any proceeds could go into-
Okay.
-kickstart, you didn't use the word kickstart, I did, the trust.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so we're talking about unclaimed checks.
Yeah, don't they, do they hit free tax if we end up writing them off?
Excuse me?
Where do they go? Do they hit free cash? The tailings hit free cash? Okay, that's what I thought, but I couldn't remember.
But I will say that Candy, our Assistant Treasurer, is like a detective with finding people and calling people. You'd be surprised how many vendors don't get checks, and then send us a statement, and then we call. And, you know, you would think that after 60 days, that they would be calling us instead of us calling them, but that's how it works. But we also, you know, through our new computer system, hopefully we'll be making electronic payments, so that will cut down on chasing the actual checks.
Yeah, how about automatic deposit? Because else payroll checks are a pain.
They are, that they are. So all city councillors sign up for direct deposit if you haven't already. Sorry, I got off the subject.
Okay, Counsel Bona, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm with the other community member that was present, is, did I hit everything, or anything else you want to say? Um, yeah, you brought up the point right on the head, this will require new reporting elements that the city's going to have to follow, and the treasurer's office is going to follow, so it's just important that we have the protocols in place to make sure we're meeting all of those deadlines and meeting all those requirements.
In this, I'm sorry, Counsel Shade, President Sapienza, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
This will help us with the process, there's nothing worse than having to send money out of your own treasury.
Yeah.
Okay, anything further? Can we get a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,529, Communication Number 133 from Mayor Maxi, presenting a proclamation recognizing and supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor Maxi, would you like to present your proclamation?
Sure, thank you, President Sapienza, this is something near and dear to my heart, as I am also a breast cancer survivor, along with many of my friends and colleagues in the audience who came to my office and said, you know, we need to recognize breast cancer, breast cancer awareness, and breast cancer survivors. So here we are, it's something that we all need to be aware of, not just in women, but men also. So I'm pleased and honored to pronounce October 2025 Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer remains one of the most common cancers among women, impacting families and communities across our nation, and whereas advances in medical research, early detection and treatment have improved survival rates, yet far too many lives have still lost each year to the disease. And whereas raising awareness about the importance of regular screening, self-examinations, and education is essential in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas countless survivors, advocates, caregivers, medical professionals, and organizations dedicate their time, resources, and energy towards support, treatment, and the pursuit of a cure. And whereas the city of North Adams recognizes in the courage and resilience of those affected by breast cancer, and stands in solidarity with the individuals and families confronting this disease head-on. And whereas the city encourage our residents to participate in community awareness efforts, support organizations committed to breast cancer research and advocacy, and honor the memory of those we've lost. Now therefore I, Jennifer A. Maxi, Mayor of the city of North Adams, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'd like to present this to my dear friend, Joanne Delago, I'm sorry, Joanne Cowlin.
I can't thank everyone enough. I asked Jennifer for this opportunity, and the outspread from our community is-
Excuse me?
-absolutely overwhelming. Was absolutely overwhelming. Joe Lantini from the flower gallery, Mount Williams, Stop &amp; Shop, I went to them and said, geez, can you help me? And they turned around and made 35 bows, and when they ran out, went to Michael's in Pittsfield, and Michael's also from Pittsfield helped to make this happen. I, I don't even know what to say, I'm just overwhelmed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you. Council Paper Number 12,530, Communication Number 134 from Mayor Maxi, presenting a proclamation recognizing Community Media Day on October 20th, 2025. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor Maxi, would you like to present your proclamation?
So I specifically want to give a shout out to Tammy Daniels from I Berkshers Izzy, who is new from the Berkshire Eagle, and especially the TV station, the North Berkshire Community Coalition, and Pete Gentile, who sits behind the scenes and makes sure that we can, our community can hear what we do here in city government. And Matt Tucker, who's the new director of the TV station, said to me, have you ever heard of Community Media Day? And I said, no, when is it? And he said, October 20th. I said, okay, well, we should celebrate that, so here we are. We always forget the people behind the scenes, the people who sit through all of our meetings and really get the information out to people. So today's in recognition of all of our community, Community Media. So, October 20th, 2025, we will proclaim Community Media Day within the city of North Adams. Whereas Community Media is a vital resource for small cities like North Adams, helping to keep residents informed about local government, school events, and issues that directly affect their daily lives. And whereas access to local media ensures that the people of North Adams and the greater Northern Berkshire region have a platform to share their stories, participate in civic life, and stay connected to one another. Whereas Community Media fosters creativity by offering local residents a space to explore video production, storytelling, and multimedia communication, enriching the cultural and artist fabric of our community. And whereas the work of the Northern Berkshire Community Television has helped maintain transparency in local government by televising city council meetings, public forums, and school events, keeping our community informed and engaged. And whereas the TV station continues to support North Adams residents and organizations by offering reliable access to the public, educational, and government program that reflects the unique identity and the values of our great city. So whereas, Community Media Day observed on October 20th each year provides an opportunity to recognize local organizations, staffs, and volunteers who make Community Media possible. I now therefore, Jennifer A. Maxi, Mayor of the city of North Adams, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2025 as Community Media Day. Thank you. And I'm going to give this to Pete Gentile.
Thank you. If we could, can Mr. Gentile come out front, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We've had a great night to not go live.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Paper Number 12,531, Communication Number 135 from Mayor Maxi, announcing the appointment of Deborah Benoit to the Historical Commission for a term to expire January 2nd, 2028. Appointment of Jason Vavory to IDEA Commission, filing, filling the unexpired term of Amanda Hartlidge for a term to expire February 8th, 2027. Appointment of Lisa LaScarbo to the Library Board of Trustees, filling the unexpired term of Tara Jacobs for a term to expire January 2nd, 2026. Appointment of Sarah Bloom to the Planning Board, filling the unexpired term of Dean Bullett for a term to expire February 1st, 2028. And appointment of Maddy Kovler to the Public Arts Commission, filling the unexpired term of Amanda Hartlidge for a term to expire May 1st, 2027. Can I, I will file a communication without objection. Mayor Maxi, would you like to speak on your appointment, please?
Yes, I'd like to thank all the individuals named for stepping up and reaching out to me, and wanting to serve the city of North Adams. Tonight, if Debra, you could stand, and Sarah Bloom, if you could just stand to be recognized. So Debra will be joining us on the Historic Commission, and Sarah will be joining us on the Planning Board. So thank you both for being here tonight, we appreciate you being here, and we look forward to working with you on the commissions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Council Paper Number 12,532, a communication from Counselor Fitch requesting a public data dashboard from the city administration to track the impact of federal administration and congressional cuts on North Adams. Counselor Fitch, would you like to speak to your communication?
Yeah, certainly, thank you. This, this comes in response to news that we've all probably seen clawbacks, we've heard a lot about clawbacks in recent history, or just reduction of funds from the federal administration or from Congress. And I noticed that Mass, the state of Massachusetts, our Commonwealth, put out a new webpage titled "Impact of Trump Administration in Congressional Cuts on Massachusetts," totaling $3.7 billion have been pulled back. I was hopeful that North Adams could create a similar list, just so that the public is informed of how much money we are missing out on that was previously committed to, or maybe even not, but I would request this of the administration, and through the chair to the mayor, are you open to doing this, Mayor Maxi?
Yeah.
Because I'll refer it.
Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, we'll be happy to look at it. I can report as of today that directly a lot of our federal projects have been under review, but we haven't had any money clawed back as of yet. Now that I've publicly said that, I probably cursed myself, but we will definitely look at that. Our Husick River Revitalization Project is under review, it went under review on Thursday. We haven't heard nay or yea about that, but we feel that we have a successful structural project, and we're finding that some of the projects that are non-structural have been clawed back, so we're keeping our fingers crossed on that. We were a little nervous with some of the federal school grants, but we made it through the project review. We were paused for the Distress Communities Grant for about a week or two, but that's in full swing. We haven't had anything talk to us about reconnecting communities, but we're almost at 90% with that. So, so far, we're dodging a bullet, so we can talk more, if you'd like, about that. We always worry about our social services agency with fuel assistance and things like that, especially with the winters we have here in North Adams. But I'm certainly willing and open to look at that, but right now, knock on wood, other than our friends and our social services agencies, which is big, which will affect us somehow, we've been fortunate to dodge the bullet or zigzag in the curves a little bit, that we haven't seen any direct clawbacks, but we're still young in the process, I will say.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that response.
Thank you.
And I also just want to state too, my intention is not to bring partisan politics into this body, I do want to however, keep our public informed of money that we may end up losing out on from the federal government, if that should happen. So I would just move to refer this to the administration, due back the first meeting of November.
Okay, we have a motion to move it to the administration to the first, postpone it to the first meeting of November.
November 11th.
November 11th.
No, it won't be November 11th.
November 12th, excuse me.
Sorry.
November 12th, okay.
Wednesday. No, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,533, a communication from City Clerk Leonazio, requesting to allow Police Chief Bailey and City Clerk Leonazio the responsibility to assign police officers to the polling place for the city of North Adams municipal election on November 4th, 2025. Clerk Leonazio, would you like to speak on your communication?
Sure, this is a communication that we traditionally do for each election. What this does is it allows Chief Bailey to look for and assign people to overtime for covering the election. This coming election, he'll be putting out to have five people, and this just is something that we have to put in front of council because of the regulations having changed previously, and so we have to come to council so that we can continue doing it the same way that we have been traditionally.
Move to approve.
Thank you, motion to approve. Do we, second, and I have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,534, Communication from City Clerk Leonazio, presenting an order calling for the city of North Adams municipal election, location and time on November 4th, 2025. I will file the communication without objection. Clerk Leonazio, would you please speak on your communication?
This communication is just simply to call the election for Tuesday, November 4th, all wards at St. Elizabeth of Hungry Parish Center, 70 Marshall Street, and stating that the times of the poll will be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it shows that the municipal offices being voted on will be the mayor, North Adams City Council, North Adams School Committee, and Northern Berkshire Vocational Regional School Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Paper Number 12,00534. An order calling for the City of North Adams Municipal Election on November 4th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the St. Elizabeth of Hungry Parish Center.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
And motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote. Counselor Shade?
Yes. In the communication about this, it had been mentioned that the price of using this venue has gone up. Have we looked into it all, potentially moving to a different venue?
Have not. We do have a backup venue, and it is a backup for emergency in case we have to leave and go to another site for whatever emergency that may be. But we have not looked into that. It is still a really good price. It's gone up $150. Hasn't gone up in a very long time.
Okay, Counsel Blackmer?
And I would say that over the years, when I first moved here, we had five polling locations. We've gradually moved them over. This location is handicap accessible, has bathrooms, has parking. We kind of know what we're getting when we use it, and $150 increase when we haven't had an increase in the scheme of everything else going up, I don't think is unreasonable. I think we might have to budget in in the future, because we've got a primary and a general next year, so we'll just have to add a little more to the budget. But I think it makes sense to stay where we are, particularly if we do need a backup for legal, security, public safety reasons, then I think it's a good place to start.
Okay. Counselor Bona?
I think also should be considered how things have changed since then also, though, with now early voting, mail-in voting. You know, City Clerk mentioned today, you know, there's already a considerable number, you know, of mail-ins that have come in compared to past when it's just been local elections. So, you know, you're going to see less people probably going to the polls and more people doing that kind of voting, so.
Okay, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskiewicz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Zepienza?
Yes.
Seven Yays?
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,00535. A communication from City Clerk Leonazio announcing in-person early voting, location and dates for the City of North Adams Municipal Election on November 4th, 2025. File this communication without objection. Clerk Leonazio, would you like to speak on this communication, please?
So I wanted to make sure that, it hasn't been done this way in the past, but I wanted to make sure that we are bringing to council the fact of our early in-person voting. So normally, you would only bring to council if you are requesting less time. We don't do that. We go for the full amount of time. So I have posted our in-person voting, and I do want to make sure that people are aware that October 18th, because there's also a very large group that's going to be coming in. I have called our state election, and I've called our city solicitor to see if it would be okay. It looks like with Mass General Law, I would be able to split it on both Saturday and Sunday. And I will post, I'm not going to hear back from elections or from our solicitor until tomorrow morning, unfortunately. So I will have that day posted on our main website, on the main page, soon as I have an answer. And I'll give Izzy and Tammy a call as well, so that they know and they can put out.
And first, any discussion from the counselors? Go ahead, Mayor.
If I may, this large group that the city clerk is referencing is we know that on Saturdays, we've had some friendly protests in front of City Hall. They are advertising that they expect a large group. And I believe because the polls would be open that day and people might not feel comfortable coming through, that we also are asking them to go to another location. But it's not that we know a large group of voters are coming in. We know that this group is planning a larger event than normal, and has asked permission to use our public lot, which we granted prior to knowing that Clerk Leonazio was going to do polling. So we are trying to work through that with the group to allow them to peacefully protest.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, moving on.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Counselor Brain?
Yeah. October 28th, it says 5:00, last day for applying for mail-in ballots. Is that in-person?
That is mail-in. So in-person is going right through to the 31st. So we have two weekends. We have the weekend of this coming weekend.
No, I understand that. What I'm wondering is, October 28th, you have till 5:00 for last day to apply for mail-in.
Yes.
And you have in-person early voting on that day only till 4:30?
I'm open until 5:00. I'm open, and the reason I've written that in separately is because the office will be open until 5:00, because we have to give until, by regulation, we have to give until 5:00 on that day for anybody who wants to apply, bring in an application for a mail-in ballot to go to them.
So this Saturday before, we're open for in-person early voting till 5:00? So if someone comes in at quarter to 5:00 on the 28th to fill out a ballot, they'll be refused?
No, I would not refuse anybody. We always go over and above. I'm there, we're there until 5:00. If somebody wants to come in and they want to be able to vote, I'm not going to tell them they can't.
Perfect. I just worry about that.
Yeah, no, I'm there. I wouldn't say no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Bona?
Yeah. City Clerk, I don't know if you can sort of give an update. You've already received a number of those applications, right?
Yes. So we have a total of 644 applications that we have mailed out as of today, or not applications, but ballots. Those are the amount of applications that have come in. And we did get a large number back in today. I don't have the number. I did put them into the system. But in comparison to our last municipal, we had a total of 68 altogether for in-person voting and mail voting, mail-in voting. And so over the years, the mail-in has definitely become more popular, and coming in for in-person voting has definitely become more popular. So we shall see where the numbers go. But there's definitely a 100% increase.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Moving on. Committee reports in minutes. Hearing none. I do have one from Public Safety. The Public Safety Committee met this past Wednesday, and we have decided that we will hold off, and we're going to be recommending to the full council to hold off on any type of ban until the second meeting in February. That will be presented as a motion at that meeting when that comes up soon. And that's where we stand there. Counselor Bona gave us an excellent presentation on a program that he has more or less sponsored and got off the ground to collect nip bottles. And the committee decided to give that a shot and see how that works, and we'll reevaluate it come February. Counselor Bona, did you have anything to add to that?
I just want to clarify that that's a recommendation. The council still did.
It was a recommendation. The council still, you're right. I did mention that. Yep. Okay.
An update, though, that that was not a unanimous vote of the committee.
It was not a unanimous vote. It was two to three. Oh, I'm sorry.
Two to three.
One to, two to one. Thank you. We have no licenses tonight. Open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. And again, raise your hand if you would like to speak, and I will call you up to the microphone. Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Can I use this one?
Yes, you may.
Alice Bojanowski, Tyler Street, North Adams. I am here to tell you three things. So according to my calendar, the municipal election is three weeks from today, and I'm hoping that we'll have a good turnout. Okay, it's a municipal election, but come on, everyone, remember the wonderful suffragettes that fought for our right to vote? So come on down to St. Elizabeth and go and vote, for heaven's sakes, please. I'm excited also, number two of my three items tonight, housing. I'm very, very excited that the Affordable Housing Trust, whatever it's being called, has been passed. Thank you. That is a way of making more housing available here in North Adams. And then three, just a reminder, tomorrow is a deadline for the AARP. That's American Retired Persons, like me, gray hairs. It's a funded design contest, and it's for accessory dwelling units here in North Adams. Jenny Wright of the North Adams Partnership is in charge of making that happen. I'm delighted to work with her as a volunteer. And it's called the Smart, Small and Smart ADU Design Challenge. And everyone can find more information online under northadamspartnership.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else for, yes, please step up to the mic?
Hi, Lilian Zabatsky, 441 East Main Street. I just have a quick question tonight. I was looking at the early voting and absentee voter ballot schedule, and it says, so October 20th is the last day to apply for mail-in ballots. And I was wondering, first of all, how you apply for those mail-in ballots, but then it also says November 3rd is last day and hour to apply for absentee ballots. So I guess I was confused when I read that. So.
No two-way. We'll do that during updates. Yeah. Thank you, Lil. Anybody else for open forum? Yes, please step up to the mic.
All right. We may all applaud the day that I run out of questions. But this is Virginia Real, 36 Holden Street, and I have two questions. One is about the roof replacement for McCann. And it looks to me, based on the schedule for the approval of all the districts, that this would be on the agenda for the next council meeting, because 60 days would either be 1103 or 1106, so. And then I wanted to see if the mayor, the obligation that the city would have is 2.663 million 266 dollars. Anyway, 2 million, a little, well, anyway, I think you got it. So I would see if you would like to talk about your position on this, and also what the financing mechanism is that you're considering for this. And then my second question is, I saw on the overpass a few weeks back that they were doing some work, and so I went over and talked to the people, and they said they were doing an inspection of the temporary repairs. And so I was wondering if the city had received a report on that inspection and what the findings were. And then I thought I saw some other activity going on, and have there been any additional work on the overpass? Maybe that was not work on the overpass, but I couldn't tell from where it was. That's my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on open forum? Okay, moving on. This is Mayor's Updates. Mayor, would you like to fill us in on anything tonight?
Sure. On the overpass, the Veterans Memorial Overpass, that is just a routine inspection. I have not myself seen the report, but no news is good news. If there was something wrong, I would have gotten a call from Francesca Hemming from Mastod. So no news is good news on that. We were fixing some of the potholes that surround the bridge, so maybe that's the second crew that you saw. But they will be out on the bridge making regular inspections to make sure that the other side of the bridge isn't having issues, as well as doing more engineering as we move forward to, through the tip, the tip project for the bridge. As far as McCann goes, I have been advised that because we are a city, we don't have to accept or reject that funding will come through us through an assessment. Some communities, more towns, who have a governing select board, will do that. As far as the financing for the McCann project, that will be done through the Northern Berkshire Vocational School District, and then that, those monies will be spun off to us through our assessment process. The number, off the top of my head, what they're estimating, is right now an estimate. As it gets closer, we may see interest rates go up, go down, who knows? So that's how we're going to treat it through our budgeting cycle when it comes up in fiscal year 27, 26. We're in 26 now. We're in fiscal year 26.
I have everything down.
So we will deal with that when we do the budget, the next budget cycle. So that's where we are with McCann. So I think I answered those questions. If not, we can talk sidebar. Happy to do that. And the only update that I have, because I want to focus on fun things, is on Friday, October 24th, we will have our downtown trick-or-treat sponsored by the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. They host the trick-or-treat from 4:30 to 6:00. And then that event will be followed by our haunted house at the Mohawk from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. I suggest you get in line early. And we will also have some vendors, as well as a lot of activities, not a lot, some activities, I should say, on the street to occupy people while they're waiting. So keep in mind that those two events are coming up and coming up quick. So get all your Halloween costumes out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Liaison updates, counselor updates. Counselor Shade?
First, I want to thank the mayor for bringing up the proclamations this evening. It is extremely important that we recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but also, in times of uncertainty like now, just as important that we recognize the breast and its importance to our democracy. I also want to remind everybody, as it's been beaten to death tonight, please vote. It is vital that you vote. We need you. We can't do this work without you, and we wouldn't be here without you. So please participate in the democratic process. Please vote. Please vote early, if it conveniences you. Don't vote often, that's not allowed. But please go out and vote. Thank you all.
Thank you. Counsel Blackmer?
I just want to acknowledge the Fire Department's Public Safety Open House this past weekend. They had a really good turnout. They had some fun things going on. I hope everybody was able to get a chance to visit, visit with them and tour and see the trucks. And obviously, if you've got kids under a certain age, or even big kids, they are enthralled by all that. So it was a nice day for it, too.
It was. Very nice. Yeah, thank you. Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, a few things. First of all, I just want to thank my colleagues and the public, and especially Virginia Real and Lilian Zabatsky from the audience, for helping to support this Affordable Housing Trust and voting unanimously for it. I was nervous as heck, and so just thank you for supporting it and voting unanimously. I never, I never would have expected that, and I'm just so grateful that you all see this need and are helping to work to address this need. I also want to thank Joanne so much for the ribbons. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't have anything pink, it turns out. And also to thank, yeah, our local media representatives, having attended some statewide conferences and having had a discussion with other leaders from across Massachusetts, it seems that we actually have it pretty good. We have active representatives from our local media in our council meetings and reporting on our council meetings. And that is so important for our community, and so many people don't have that. So thank you, and thank you, Mayor Maxey, for doing that proclamation. And then the last thing was, I have a particularly, I think, inspiring quote that I picked up from the first anniversary of the North Adams Partnership. They had an event over at 90 Main Street, and they put up this quote on They had an event over at 90 Main Street, and they put up this quote on the screen. It was from their intern who had served with them for, I don't know, a semester or something like that. And the quote was, "I feel like I'm part of something important." And that just really stuck with me, because as soon as I stepped foot in North Adams, I felt like I was a part of something that was really important. And I just wanted to shout that out to those of you who have joined boards or commissions, or those of you who are about to join boards and commissions. Thanks for being a part of something important. We're all working so hard to improve North Adams, and it's so important that we have as much public involvement as possible, whether speaking at meetings, whether joining boards or commissions, or running for city council. So thank you so much to all of you who are doing that, and please, more. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Bona?
Oh, yeah. Through the chair, the mayor has a response is, I know you mentioned about the bridge updates, but I saw a lot of orange vests and a lot of spray painting going on the roads on Ashland Street. Is, what, what's happening with that right now? Is it people are noticing that?
So two things on Ashland Street. The first is Berkshire Gas is putting in a new gas line. So that's probably what most of the markings are. And second, we're preparing for the Ashland Street Corridor project, so there may be some last-minute engineering or marking or, you know, we, we will be coming back to council with some temporary easements or permanent easements. I think they're mostly going to be temporary. So you may see some of that going on, but most of the markings is for the gas line.
And when will the gas, are they going to be digging soon or not till spring, or going through the winter? Okay.
We're not going to have winter in North Adams this year.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Point of order, that's a lie.
I'll have my mother work on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Get the rosary beads on.
Yeah.
Anybody else on counselor updates? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Leonazio, and maybe she can answer the questions that one of our visitors had tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
So on the deadlines for the last days for, Lilian, you asked, right? For the mail-in ballots or from the absentee, those are set by state regulations, so, and I add those in. I mean, those are, those are just set by the state regulations for the deadline for applying. Is that what you were asking?
I think.
Or how they can?
I think you wanted to know the difference. I'm sorry. The difference between which is which. So can I give an example? Because I've done this before. Or you can go ahead. I don't know. Go ahead. I just, she seemed to not, because mail-in balloting is relatively new.
It is. It is. And so the mail-in is anybody who wants to vote but does not want to go to the polls. An absentee ballot, the person is physically not going to be in North Adams for voting. So that ballot is going someplace else, normally, wherever they're going to be. Like if somebody is down in Florida for the winter, but they want to vote, they want their ballot to go down to Florida, because they're physically not here, they cannot vote. That is the difference between a regular mail-in or the absentee. So it says last day. Sorry to.
We, we can't have any back and forth? If you want to talk to the clerk afterwards?
Yeah, you can, you can talk to me after if you want.
You're welcome to talk to her after, okay.
Definitely.
Yeah. Counsel Blackmer?
I was going to clarify. Absentee ballot isn't just Florida. It's, oh crap, I'm supposed to vote on Tuesday. I was planning on voting. On Friday, I find out I have to be, I have to go out of town on a business meeting, or my mother got sick and I have to do something, or something came up and I just can't be there. You have until noon on Monday to go in an absentee ballot. Those are also some of the other circumstances. You could all of a sudden be in the hospital, and there are other reasons you might, it's, it's with the original, the original absentee ballot, what people used to do. You're going to be out of town, you're ill, you've got family, things come up, and you realize you're not going to be able to vote. You have until noon the day before the election to, to absentee ballot, to get one. I know, like, my father had to get one for my mother because she was definitely ill. So, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify that, because I think there's some confusion, because you live it all the time? That's what you do? Other people.
Don't.
Don't. So I was trying to make it a little more understandable.
All right. Anything else? No? Okay, moving on. Yes, Mayor?
Just two. On October 28th, this is last day to apply for mail-in ballots, early or absentee. And then on November 3rd, it says last day and hour, last day and hour to apply for absentee ballots. I think the question from the gallery is, you're saying on October 28th, it's the last day, and then you're saying on November 3rd is the last day. Just clarifying.
So I think one is mail-in, one is mail-in, and one is absentee.
Okay. If we could clarify that, that would be great. Okay.
And I have that written in. One is mail-in, and one is.
One is, okay.
Absentee.
Absentee ballot, okay. All right. Moving on. Correspondence. Do we have any correspondence? Seeing none, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.